So, I'd like to bring our meeting to, call our meeting to order at 6:32. And we do have one quick introduction. We had a changing in the board chair position from PC. Thank you Charlie Day for your service and welcome Michael Smith to the position.
And Michael has also appointed a third PC member. It is David Reister who will be joining us today.
Yes, hopefully tonight. That's the plan.
Excellent, thanks Michael.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, on to our second agenda item, visitors and employees to be heard. Seeing no visitors except Amy and Kim. Do you have something that you would like to?
I'm gonna hear from the data.
Excellent. Yes, yes.
Um, just, Michael, welcome, welcome into your new role here. I think we also should introduce our new recorder of our minutes here this evening, right?
Yes, that's true. I didn't mean to forget you, Ben. So, Ben Dickey will be, will be recording minutes for us for the remainder of this year and then we'll, well, we get, we will get to that, I guess, somewhere in the agenda.
Does Ben know all of us or do we need to go around and say our names for the minutes?
I think we should be okay with the name tags. Ben?
Just in y'all videos.
Watch, watch the film later and, okay. So, our first agenda topic, the Student Data Learning System brings us several guests tonight. So, Amy, Kim, where's yours?
Well, you received some information in your board packet, so I want to make sure that we have an opportunity to answer any questions that we have about this. The data search tasking, the first page that you're gonna look at is an overview document that I wrote, especially with you in mind. We've had a data search tasking working for about a year and a half. Representatives included Bob Travers, Carrie Dickinson, I think they were listening on the sheet, Erin McGuire, Vince Canillo, myself. Judy has met with us several times and then it's part of our work, as you know, one of our recommendations was to add a position, a position as the Educational Assessment Manager. And tonight, Nikki Gaywar, you knew CCSU Educational Assessment Manager. Under her leadership, we were able to go much deeper and you have in front of you probably more information than you want to look at, but you will see a product review that shows you that we looked at seven tools. Backing up further in our timeline, and I can't remember if you were updated on this, but ELT at one point created a critical components list, or a critical criteria list upon which we evaluated these. When Kim came on with her expertise, she was able to actually help us fine tune that critical list. We reviewed seven pieces of software. We narrowed it down to three and for a variety of reasons narrowed it down to one. We brought that one to ELT last week, our last ELT meeting this month, which included a vendor presentation. And we're happy to report that ELT has voted and is recommending that we move forward with a program called Admin Inform and even happier to say to you that we have the funding for it and that we've structured it in such a way with this vendor that, that we actually won't need to go to our taxpayers looking for funds until FY '17. So, we felt particularly proud of that. It's a very robust system. We feel really good about it in terms of its capabilities and I'm happy, and I know Kim will be, to answer any questions that you want. Given that you had 10 minutes, I don't know where you want to go with this, so I think I'm gonna leave it for questions. You let me know what you'd like to know about this. I think tonight Judy, I need help framing this one out, though. The action item is authorization to you to enter into an agreement?
Yep, they have the action item in their, approval is recommended, purchase Admin Inform, enter into the contract with Admin Inform.
And that's for two plus years. It's called three years and you'll see in the, in the implementation plan, it's called year one, year two, year three. Really, year one is March 1 of this year until the end of our fiscal year, which is June 30th, so we're calling that year, that prorated year one. And the purchase price of $65,000 buys us the product for an additional two years.
I'll have a question.
I knew you would.
Thank you. All right, so there's a couple of things that, that I was curious about. So, the components that we're purchasing are outlined towards the end of the presentation and we, we really have a small subset of what they, they offer. So, I'm familiar with learning management systems and the, I'd like to understand a bit about the, the difference between something that's a little more comprehensive around, let's say curriculum or lesson plans, kind of like an open source, kind of sharing model within the school and how an assessment data system looks like compared to that and can it morph into something more in the future?
Sure. So, so there's a couple of things. There's one, there's learning management systems and a number of our teachers use Google Sites and Moodle to, to provide delivery of instruction. There's your student information management system, your SIS system, which is Power School. Each of these systems has distinct purposes and designs around them. This assessment system is designed in such a way that it will provide our teachers and administrators a dashboard and that dashboard will include all of the data that we, that we collect. It will also, well, it will include the data that we collect such as state assessment data, local assessment data and be at the ready fingertips of teachers. They'll not only see it in reports that we build for them with Kim's help, but when a teacher logs in, they'll also have the ability to query it on their own. In other words, if they really wanted to see a particular data point, how are their students doing on math scores who have frequent trips to the nurse? This database will house all of that and allow them to query that. So, we'll build canned reports for them, but they'll also be able to query it. That's the assessment and data reporting module that you see, that first one that we're buying. The second one is an assessment builder where teachers will be able to build assessments, hand students logins and allow students to be able to log on and take a test and the data would move directly into the system. In other words, you could take a traditional, say for example midterm exam at the high school, put it on this system, have kids log on, take it, which not only gives them the opportunity to practice taking tests on computers, which we're faced with, with SVAC coming, but the teacher won't have to score it, turn around and put it into a data system. It will move over. And the third module that we're particularly excited about is the access to the NWEA. That's the Northwest Educational Association. I'm gonna go with that word. It's a, it's a, it's an organization that's been around for many, many years and they're very well respected. They've produced a number of assessment systems themselves and they have a large bank, I think over 70,000, assessment tasks, assessment items. So, the teacher, rather than putting their own midterm exam, they could also build an assessment by pulling things over and building a test right there. So, those are the three pieces that we're excited about. There is a curriculum, curriculum module there. We looked at a number of systems and after continually going back to ELT and looking at our critical component list, we realized that our work really wanted to be data focused. There are some systems that are very good at uploading lesson plans, allowing teachers to share their lessons with each other and we're not that great at data in terms of the robust nature of the data that we were looking at and what we wanted to do. This system is very good at data. The curriculum piece of it, we didn't feel that was all that compelling. It was much more about sharing resources. We have other ways of doing that. We, Curriculum Matthews and Google Docs and there, there are other software out there should we really decide that we wanna to, to do something further with that. What we do like about this system is while it doesn't allow you to upload lesson plans, it does allow you to keep, it doesn't allow, it requires that everything be standards based. So, when you're pulling that task over, you have to know what the standard is that you're pulling over. And with the work that we've done around standards based in our district, it just felt like a much better fit. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah. Part of the, the reason I ask is because training and buy-in from faculty is critical. So, in researching this years ago, I was talking to somebody where they had implemented essentially, I think it was Haiku, where they had implemented not only the LMS portion of this, but even like benefits and HR and lesson plans and the thinking being is if you force someone to immerse themselves, then they become so comfortable with the system and it's their go-to for everything that they, they got, they saw higher utilization than they thought they would otherwise. Just a, you know, just a way of thinking about having another, something else to train and how will, how do we expect the acceptance of it to change over the years?
Well, one of the nice pieces is, is that it will be embedded right in Power Teacher. So, when, when they're already in their system, they're already logged in, they'll just see an additional menu that brings them over to a place where data will be there for the first time. Our reality is such that our, I'll give an example. Justin Norris is our math CCL up at the high school and annually he calls me and says, "Could you send me that big spreadsheet that has all of our kids' names on it so I can look at their achievement levels so I can figure out if we can grant them the opportunity to not take the midterm exam because they've passed it?" It's a very lengthy process to get that information over to them in a way that they can use. Systematizing it in this way will leave it right at their fingertips. I would say probably every two weeks, we have a data query from our school that requires a lot of work to find out where the data's sitting, what's the format, who put it in there, what does it look like? And we're really excited about the fact that this will not only satisfy the current need that we have from those kind of requests, but encourage more requests from teachers. They'll be able to access it themselves or call our new handy dandy assessment manager and get that.
The other piece, Mark, is that there's not a current system within this supervisory union that does what this one does. There's no such thing as a system that is a one size fits all, does everything you needed to do. Like student information systems, you quite often want them to do everything you can possibly think of and they can't. And that was a big part of this work, was figuring out first, based on critical criteria, what we wanted, what we could get, what we needed, what we could afford, et cetera, et cetera. And this one absolutely rose to the top of the seven that we looked at as being the one that best met our needs now and I think in the future. And I think, having come from another district that had an assessment tool, I think it will start to sell itself the first time that a teacher like Justin can go in and get the data that he needs without having to pick up the phone, once he knows how to use it.
Kim comes to us from Essex Town. She's, she managed, I think, seven systems over there.
I, several.
So, she's very familiar, several, several systems over there. So, she's very familiar with the concept of get the right tool to do the job in front of you. I would agree with you, as much as we can integrate those and that was a critical part of our work.
Absolutely.
We have Goalview, it's working well. We met with Vince and Mike and Helen last week and stood in front of a giant whiteboard and said, "How will Goalview talk to Power School? How will Power School talk to this?" And, and our IT department is really committed to making sure that those connections, you know, take place.
There has to be seamless integration between it and for instance, Power School or Goalview because they'll play a part in feeding it. Creation of the student records, the demographics associated with those kids and then we can begin loading in the assessment data. And once we do things, like, I mean this in the kindest of ways, tease them with that, show the stories that you can tell on a dashboard or in a report center. The ones, probably the people that are more sort of computer savvy will come first, but I've seen people not computer savvy at the other end of the spectrum. When they see what a tool like this can do, they'll become believers. It'll save them time. It'll inform their instruction. They're powerful when they get the data in them and they start telling stories about kids and groups of kids.
So, as we're seeing the shift towards standard based report cards, right? And if this is, if these assessments rely on standards, are we poising ourselves to at some point be able to use some of the accumulated assessments to help parents understand what, I mean, cause confusion around report cards came out pretty loud and clear. How can we fix that using some tools like this?
Where, where we need to go is, is to be able to, when you open up a standard based report card and see a checkmark, have confidence that that checkmark is backed by multiple data sources. So, a local assessment, potentially a state assessment and teacher judgment, formative assessments, that kind of thing. Right now, the teachers do that work, but it sits outside of this and I don't know, I know that our teachers work really hard to help parents understand what judgment went in to make that and I know that they have the assessment there. Whether this system itself will serve to replace it or back it up, I, I want to make sure that in the very least, it provides our teachers with the tools to be able to back it up. That was one of the critical criterias list. Right now, we have our standard based report card on Power School and it works relatively well, but it means that the teachers have to go in and enter it. I'd love to see us move to a point where a system like this, and I'm not promising that it can because we're still trying to get our hands into this, but a system like this would not only be the place where the data sits, but it could generate that checkmark rather than have it be based on teacher judgment alone. So, it will, it will support our work towards it. There's a great deal of work, I think, that needs to go there first. But ideally, as a parent, you should have that data sitting next to you saying, "That checkmark is based on this."
Andrew?
With that checkmark in mind, that shows that they've achieved the program, but does it demonstrate, achieve with excellence, proficiency, met expectations? How will the parent understand at what level they are?
That, that's our job, to be able to explain it within, and again, our goal right now coming out of the gate is to use this system to create a standard space report card, so much as to, to, to better our work around data, our understanding of data, so that it produces more rigorous backup to those judgment calls. But having said that, within a system like this, when we, when we enter an assessment, we choose what is exceeds, what is meeting the standard, what's nearly and what's below. And we could state that at this point in time, this meets it, but at this point in time, it doesn't. In other words, you should have moved further along. Fanta's and Penelope, or FNP is an assessment that we give a reading that has specific letter benchmarks. It's similar to that. You, you don't want to be at a J forever. You want to continually be moving, you know, your way up.
Moving up. And that's what I think.
And that is hard for parents to understand when it's simply a checkmark next to a standard.
Right, if it shows, it implies that, you know, they demonstrated they've gone through that lesson plan per se, but does it demonstrate whether, well, would you want to have a doctor that had a checkmark versus another doctor that didn't have a checkmark? Which one is more proficient?
We, we have some work to do around that. It's challenging.
One last one for me. What is the estimated cost, running cost after year three?
We're gonna hover depending on whether or not we're happy with the modules that we've purchased or wanna purchase the additional module. We'd be hovering a little bit less than 30,000 a year.
Okay, so year three's numbers of 27, seven are roughly what we would expect moving forward?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That is, you know, a lot of these systems are based on enrollment. We won't necessarily admit to them that we do have declining enrollment. That works in our favor in terms of cost, but we do have a considerable discount for being a small district by, by national standards. I can't say enough about the vendor support. Our relationship with the vendor has been tremendous and we're looking forward to doing the work with them. But I think what we learned in this process is that there were some softwares out there that you could put a lot of money upfront and then it was a smaller amount annually and we realized that's exactly what you'd be buying in terms of a level of service, is that one phone call annually as opposed to the continual service. We, Kim spoke with a number of customers who helped us to tease that out, the difference between those kind of purchasing options and in particular, this vendor, we left feeling really confident about.
Yeah, I, I, in all the vendors I've dealt with in my prior job, this one I am so excited to begin working with. They stand out, gold star. They've been with us every step of the way. I was teasing them the other day saying that we had been much needier than I expected us to be and yet in spite of that, every question, every quest for, request for a meeting, every inquiry for more information, "I want to talk to another customer. Are you sure you do everything on this product review list?" They never said no. Every time, they went out of their way to answer our questions and it speaks to the, the CEO, who, who he is, what he's about, superior customer service, deep relationships. I already feel like I've made friends with people out there. They're based in San Diego and I, I can't begin, wait to begin this relationship because I think it will benefit everyone, especially the students.
Has been the missing piece.
I apologize, I was busy signing some financial documents, so I think I missed a part of it. Are other districts in Chilton County using this or going?
Not this particular one, no.
No, some states have chosen to purchase statewide systems and offered it to their schools. One of the vendors we looked at actually was one of the recipients of the RFP, or the winner of the RFP for the state of Massachusetts in Ohio. There's been conversation in Vermont about that, but it hasn't yielded anything. We have a couple of software packages that are popular in Vermont. We looked at those and then with Kim's guidance, looked a little bit more deeply and so, no, we are the only ones in the state of Vermont purchasing this one.
We hope we'll play a part and others joining on though. There is something to be said for having other clients nearby that you can meet with and discuss, but that, it's not by any means a negative that there's no one here. I think this is the beginning of this product in this state and I think others will follow because I think we'll be telling really good stories about it and wanting to show it off.
And then just a process question. On this subject matter, do you need, do you need motions?
Yes.
That have the dollar amount in it specifying the three-year contract and authorizing someone to sign the agreement that's in our packet?
Mm-hmm. So, you're gonna authorize a superintendent to sign the agreement, the three-year contract summary with the total amount of $65,000?
So moved.
So, it's been moved and seconded, right? But do we still have a chance for discussion?
Absolutely.
So, of the $65,000, 10,334 are for the period of 1 March to 30 June of 2014, which is this fiscal year. Have, have, have we allocated those funds for this particular endeavor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for reminding me. I just was drawing a blank there.
Tap reserve funds.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And, and, and the, the next two years, of course, we, we don't yet have a CCSU budget approved yet, but these, this, this has been put into the plan for, for those.
This is.
It's paid for until FY '17. $65,000 has been set aside.
From the tap.
From the tap.
Well, 50,000 from tap reserve and I think 15 from IET.
So, 50,000 was, you reserved, you made a motion to reserve 50,000 at your last CSU board meeting for this purpose. So, the other 15,000, we were looking at, there's two sources. You could choose to use the money that was generated from the shared agreement with Franklin, the IT agreement with St. Aubens and Fairfax. So, there's funds there, so it seems appropriate to use that IT money.
IT, both that IT funds for an IT project.
Mm-hmm. So, for one-time use, so that's what we're recommending, another 15,000.
Okay.
We also felt that, you know, we want to make sure this is a good thing before we go forward and ask you for funds for this. So, it was really ideal, we were able to go to the vendor and say, "Here's the price that, that if you could get us to the point where we're not coming forward and asking for funds until FY '17, you've given us real time to test this out." And given us time to implement in a way that's thoughtful. So, for example, we're looking at training administrators and key IT staff and our ed tech, tech integration specialists this summer, teacher leaders this fall. It may be that with SVAC coming, we hold off and we only do interested teachers and not hit full teachers until the following year. But we wanted the time to do that thoughtfully. If we get to FY '17 budget planning and this system's not working, then the system's not working. We come back with a different recommendation, but we wanted to, to grant ourselves and grant you the opportunity to purchase it upfront and not have to think about it until we really kick the tires on it.
And at our last DLT meeting, which was last Tuesday, the data team presented the information. We had a webinar with Admin Inform and we took a vote and it was unanimous that they would support this product. There were no noes and no abstentions. So, when the full educational leadership team supports something, I think it speaks to the data task teamwork and thoroughness and the reporting out and feedback that they consistently provided to the team. And the next phase is the implementation plan that Amy was referring to, along with the need to design and develop collaboratively, an assessment plan for CCSU to talk about what is it that we're going to put into this system to help us understand that how students are, are progressing through the system. So, this feels like a, a dream that's been on the horizon forever and ever and I think it's a big step forward. I talked about it the other day, it feels like we're stepping on the moon to finally bring forward a, not only the expertise of an educational assessment manager this year, but also a system to house our data. So, it's been a void or a black hole for, for our system for a long time. I think we're holding off, hoping that the state was going to develop a system and I think that this might be the answer, that the state may look to us. But I, it's with great pleasure and pride that, that we can bring this forward, to this board for consideration tonight.
Ryan?
Can I just ask you, just as far as some of the thinking and obviously you came to a happy place with it, but with, between the tech center and the high school, there's 10 or 14 sending communities coming into the tech center and five or six different communities coming into the high school. So, there's a lot of different data systems and assessment systems coming in. Is it just, is it pretty universal in ingesting different systems for data?
What it has that in some ways is the most appealing to me, it has the ability to build what it calls data dictionaries and those dictionaries, in my understanding, are going to enable us to bring in really any data that we deem, if you will, worthy of bringing in. I'll admit that right now, my focus is on internal systems because there's so much involved with that, but I don't think that it's not, I think it's possible for us to at some point consider talking to other schools and saying, "Oh, you have a CSV of and fill in the blank? Oh yeah, that can absolutely be imported."
We currently do that with Essex Town. We put it in Power School. Our challenge is, once it's in Power School, we can't really query it. It sort of sits there and stands alone and then we pull up another data source over here. So, we do do some of that. You did, you did mention the tech center and so I'll say Bob and Carrie were on this committee for a reason and that's because they needed to know, you know, that we could put industry, industry standards in here, that we could look at data queries that involved short periods of time with kids from nine different feeder schools and, and, and they were particularly excited about this.
Great, thank you. A question. Excuse me. You say you can try this out for a couple of years and if it's not working for you, you don't, you don't implement it. Is that what I, is that what I heard you said, you don't?
I'm hopeful that's not the case.
Right.
But I mean, if you didn't take it though, if you didn't like it, you know, where does that leave us in two years? Are we, you know, in trouble or are we, you know?
Our data is ours. So, that's part of the contract is if we're churning data, whether it's being created by the assessment builder that's within it or we put, you know, the data in from an outside source, it's our data and we own it and that's part of our contract. So, should we shift to something else, we have that guarantee. I'd like to say that we're not going to. I just said that because I really want to make sure, I think to your response, that we, you really want this to be a valued resources for teachers. If we're going to move to a system of data-driven decision-making, we have to give them the tools to be able to have the data in a way that's timely.
Well, why I was asking is like, you know, if something doesn't work out and you don't want to use it, where does that leave us? Do we have something to fall back to? Do we not have a tool at all to, you know, analyze this data or can we continue to use? Or are we, at this point, by trying for two years, really saying, "This is our tool of the future and we're already committing to it?"
We'd know far before then.
I agree.
And the task team is committed. In fact, I think it's growing now. We have a number of people who want to join our committee to being part of the implementation of this. So, putting those monitoring progresses, you know, those, those checks along the way are really important. You know, my first shot at this implementation plan was very conservative, we'll just start with teacher leaders. Some of the reaction from ELT was, "My whole school will do it." So, there's a great deal of excitement around this. We just want to make sure we're doing it in a way that's thoughtful. And by doing that, we're testing out the vendor to see how, you know, how workable they are in terms of how responsive they are to our needs. But I just wanted to, I guess, say, if something fabulous comes, if the state of Vermont buys something that's even better, we're happy to shift. We want to meet the needs of our, of our system.
I think it's worth mentioning how great a need this is.
Well, I understand. I was wondering by, by making a decision here, are you really testing it or are you, are you, you know, in fact, already committing to it by testing it for so long? I just want to understand that.
I, I think if we, if we do find that this isn't the right product, it leaves us much better positioned to understand what our true needs are because you would have identified shortfalls or shortcomings in the, in there. You know, the fact that there's a hunger for this ability, I think will be a great asset. People will give it a try.
In terms of, you know, vendor picking and long-term.
Yeah, yeah. Ideally, it'll be here well after two and a half years and that's what, I know the data system search task team. And that's what I know the data system search task team wants and hopes will happen. But we also understand that, um, it's a substantial investment and a substantial amount of work to set it up. And that's why we made it very clear to the vendor, this is a really good thorough kicking the tires on this new car, if you will. And I think, um, they're so excited to work with us. I have every reason to believe that we'll come back to you for FY seventeen and say, we need the funding.
Any other discussion? Marla?
Uh, just something you said. So there will be, if we do accept this, regarding Dave's question, if, if this goes along fine and we get out three years, are there going to be fees every year after that?
Yes.
Are we updating it? Do we have any clue of what those fees will be out?
Yep. If you look at year three, that's our good, our, our best estimate at this point. Again, keeping in mind that's purchasing three out of four of their modules, assuming that we're happy with those modules. If you look at year three, it hovers just below, I think, thirty thousand.
Yes.
Twenty-seven.
Which I will acknowledge is more than I was expecting. I really was looking at a model that would be a large amount of money upfront and a small amount annually. And the more we spoke with people who entered into this business, both from a client point of view and server, I realized you're purchasing very little after you put a lot of money down. Um, and so this was a different, a different way of thinking about our, our relationship with a vendor being a partnership as opposed to purchasing a piece of software and then not seeing them again.
We also know from the work we did that this is compared to the, several of the other vendors on this list, um, this is a competitive price. It's, it's, it's what the market is marrying at this point. Um, and based on what the SU needs, um, it seems like it's a competitive pricing structure. But yes, it is that amount of money per year.
It may be worth mentioning too, we have a number of standardized assessments that we currently purchase that we could considerably, I mean, we could consider not purchasing. In other words, with this assessment builder, if we find a really good middle-level math screener or middle-level reading screener, we'll stop our search. We currently use something called MathDibbles. It's a dollar a child, um, over at Fleming where kids are assessed in math in an online setting. This would satisfy us. So there's some cost savings. We, we provide a star reader up at the high school. I'm not saying we're going to get rid of these because we want to be careful about these, you know, in terms of making that decision. But there are some potential savings that we could have if this really works out.
And we're waiting to learn what kind of formative assessments are included in ESBC as well. So there may be more shifts in the assessments that we're currently using.
From a, from a, a total cost of ownership, understand where we are with this sixty-five K over these years. Is this, did we do analysis on how this affects our IT, IT infrastructure? Have we got enough storage space? Have we got enough servers? Have we got the right hardware in place to support this? And it's not going to cause interference with other IT systems that, that we have online, other critical ITs? Uh, there's compatibility that's, that's, you know, this is, so, so what you're telling me is this is going to be a seamless integration from a, uh, uh, right up front here. We're not going to run into any problems installing it onto our hardware and, and, uh, getting things going. Understand, it's a great data tool and I, I, I fully support the work that you've done. I think it's great. I just unintended consequences here. Have you got, you know, the, the, the stor-, you know, I'm thinking specifically storage and, and server infrastructure to do this, so.
Um, I don't know if, I didn't notice if you said his name, but in case you didn't, Vince Cannello is also on the data system search task team.
I see that Vince was on here.
And he, um, has attended, as long as I've been here, I've only been with the district since, um, September. He's attended all of the data system search task team meetings as well as most of the webinars with the vendor, which have included some that were specifically with him and the Power School programmers. And there, we're in the process of determining if we need another one of those to bring in Seth Romano as well to get more IT expertise. So first of all, he, it's, he's absolutely looking at it with his IT lens. Second of all, it will be remote hosted. It will be on their server and we'll access it via the internet. I think Vince's single, single biggest concern right now, which is part of this possible upcoming technology meeting with them, is bandwidth.
Right.
For instance, if we're in a mode of, um, we begin to use the assessment builder in year two and we actually have students on it taking online assessments, can our bandwidth handle a whole grade, um, taking them? We don't have, to my knowledge, we don't have enough computers to do that all at once. But, um, so that's the biggest thing I know he's concerned about right now. And we're in the process of working to determine if we can get that answered and test it out. Um, in terms of other hardware ramifications, I don't think he feels there are any, in part because it's remote hosted. They, it'll be housed in a secure facility that they are responsible for maintaining. And I, and the time that I was at the last district, we moved to that more and more. There's a lot to be said for that. They have multiple systems in place to ensure that if one fails, it rolls over and is picked up by another, um, backups, et cetera, et cetera. Not to say that our IT staff here is incompetent and capable. They are. There's something to be said for having a vendor with that kind of expertise, looking over the big picture server needs, especially when this one's busy. This IT staff is very busy.
And then just a corollary to that, understand it's remote hosted.
Mm-hmm.
Um, from a security standpoint, all that has been addressed too. We know about, you know, as, as, as data gets stored further and further away, it increases the opportunity for unintended access, right? And so, um, I'm trusting that part of your evaluation and Vince's evaluation has looked at that. We know our data is not just, um, you know, backed up and recoverable in the event of an issue, but it's, it's secure from, it's secure.
Yes. I feel, I feel very confident about what they have in place to protect the data and the students. I feel very confident.
And many of us, I actually feel more confident than what we're currently doing with our data.
I do too. Yeah, I do too. Good questions.
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, let's take this to a vote. Um, all those in favor of approving the sixty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of the, uh?
Which is the, the proposed pricing of the contract that Admin Inform for a three-year contract.
Thank you. Please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstained? All right. It has passed. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, zero.
And, and to, um, I guess, reveal the excitement of this, know that when this vote was taken at ELT, I think for my first ELT meeting, applause broke out. Well, the urgency and excitement around this one. So I appreciate your support.
Thank you very much. Thank you both for coming tonight and all your work on this.
Our pleasure.
Yes.
Thank you. Much appreciated. All right. Up next, our task team updates. So, um, I think we're going to lead this off with communications, um, a review of the board member site. So our communications task team member, Michael.
I'm the only one left.
I believe there, it is.
Uh, well, the communications team is still continuing to, uh, to evaluate and, and build on the, uh, the board website. Um, continuing the focus of, uh, of the communications team as one of the task teams to, to utilize, uh, uh, development of, of, of structure and layout. Uh, Westford, I, I, who, as far as I know, is still going forward as the, as the, um, district that is continuing to explore and evaluate. Um, a couple of additional things, uh, that we're looking toward is, um, you know, centralizing how, you know, how the information is, is distributed. For example, instead of your org notes going out to everyone in an email and you're wondering, well, where, where in my email is my org notes? Your org notes will eventually, in a, in a not-too-distant future, will be available via the, the, uh, the board site. And you would get a notification of, of some sort that says, your org notes are out there, you know, go get them. What else?
There was, uh, there was a question from Jack last time around, uh, the time commitment that, that this prototyping would take from our IT department. And I know we spoke a little bit about the, the, the differences in trying to populate, um, a Google site versus what we're doing currently. Um, do you, do you have any, um, updates from Vince on?
Well, actually Ben is the person who's doing lots of the posting and, um, his expertise within is able to populate it quite easily. Um, almost anything being sent can be posted, same day. I, I think the biggest shift is probably one to use our CCSU Gmail accounts. Um, Ben's working to at least send out a notice to you that he has posted something new on the SU site. For example, I think it was last week, we posted the second issue of the legislative report. So it'll be just nice to have a repository where you go to one place and there will be all your org notes. There will be your legislative reports, your, your information now will be organized. The thing that we want feedback, continuous feedback on, is that it's intuitive for you. You, you don't, you're not finding yourself having to search for something or, uh, information from you about. It would make more sense if it was organized in a different way, the information. So that's one piece. The piece that we're continuing to work on, uh, is the board member training piece. So we have a, a section called FY fourteen and it has all the information that comes in. For example, most recently, the PICUS report on financing, um, that's posted there. So all of those updates are there for your continuous, um, learning opportunities too. Um, so what it does is it challenges you all to visit that site and, um, like you do other, other interests and passions that you have, uh, to stay updated and abreast of, um, the current education, of public school education, um, conversation happening in the state of Vermont and locally in your own, um, system. So we have a new board member replacing Charlie Day, uh, Jeff Colkin is joining us. And so he will be, yeah, very helpful when we schedule our board member orientation, uh, to tell us how that information is organized and how it informs him of the many changes. Uh, he said orientation by fire and that the, uh, PC had their first budget work session last Monday until like eleven forty-five.
You kept it to the same day it starts. So that's, that was the goal.
Our meetings were not going beyond nine o'clock. Jeff has joined us until eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty.
The next night budget was ten thirty, but he's jumped right in and his questions are great.
And he makes you realize how much change is in just a short period of time. So, um, it'll be great feedback he, uh, is on until, um, um, town meeting when, or, um, school annual meeting when, um, petitions will be taken out for other people who are interested, um, and the vote will occur. So he's on until April seventh unless we persuade him to, uh, continue his service. So we're thankful to have such an experienced board member join us during such difficult period of time with budget information and whatnot. So it's been good.
Thank you. And one, one other thing, just as far as the development of the site. So much of it's going to, going to hinge on the additional feedback of folks actually using it as it's, as it's being developed. So I think everybody's been given access to, to, to the site. So you just got to go out there and if something doesn't work the way you think it should, you got to let somebody know.
And that somebody would be Ben Dickey at the end of the table here.
Well, if not Ben, then at least the, the person that's on the, on the communications team from your district.
But he can correct things pretty quickly. Or if you have something that you think is really important that could be posted, um, Ben again is the person, if you receive reports, that could be helpful for the knowledge of all board members. Please share. That's how we learn.
I, I think one thing that I've encountered is, um, accessing the account from the website is not affordable through all the different computers, machines that we all use. Um, right now I can only access it through my personal computer. But for my work, even though we can get to the website from work, for instance, I can't access, uh, my account through there. It's blocked.
That's probably my employer.
Yeah.
My employer doing that. But I mean, as far as affordability, and if it was really web-based, then we wouldn't, uh, have that issue.
I think David, you've experienced that too. Um.
I, I mean, I, I know if there's a blockage that's occurring, but if it was a true web-based, then it'd be horrible no matter where we were, even Africa or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, that's worth looking into. So Kate, we'll, we'll take it offline.
Yeah. Thanks for that feedback, Andre.
Okay. Um, leaders at work, uh, as evidenced by our agenda tonight, you see the annual work plan discussion and then the superintendent evaluation process, um, down below. So you should have had opportunity to discuss with your board chairs by this point, um, what your priorities are for the, uh, annual work plan for the superintendent. Excuse me, which will feed into our conversation tonight. Um, but would someone from leaders at work like to get into a little further detail about next steps and plans?
Do, uh?
Marla?
Let Marla.
We, we met, I think, twice, uh, since the last CCSU meeting. And we were charged to look at the superintendent's evaluation and the timeline was a, a concern. And so, um, we prioritized the standards-based job description, that format we've used. And there's so much to it, we part, uh, took some priorities and put them in place and then sent Judy back to answer those, uh, which she brought back to us, which I believe will be an executive session tonight. And then we were behind on the timeline that we had set up. So that's why we need to start talking the needs, the goals to set the needs assessment. So we're catching up and we got behind and I think it's a lesson that we have to stay focused and, um, I'll put a plug in for getting, um, the, the chair communication notebooks put together so that we have timelines in there. So the chairs, as our chairs, as the executive committee, have a lot of responsibility. So this way they're knocking on our doors all the time. Did I, uh, capture it?
I think you did.
Great.
Quite well.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really pleased with, um, with the results so far of, of, um, the committee. And I'm glad that we're, we're on track. You know, you, you sometimes forget in the rush of things what's truly important here. And it's accountability around our priorities and the priorities of our communities. So this is good.
I think the hardest thing for me as an individual board member, seeing this, is because of how things flowed last spring, when we got notice that Mike was leaving and then Judy became superintendent, we kind of backed off of the timeline. And the unfortunate thing is, is that we have not evaluated, um, our current superintendent in a timely manner. Um, so as a board member on this board, I feel that we're really responsible for that. And I, it, it bothers me a lot. I mean, I take that to heart a lot that we've missed that. So I, I believe we owe our current superintendent an apology for, for missing the boat.
Thank you. All right. Policy?
Um, our last policy meeting, I had very limited attendance. So, um, really haven't, um.
Did you meet Quorum?
No. Well, we, we had, I, I, we had three. We only had, uh, two from one, one from one. We, we continue to discuss, um. We, we continued to discuss, um, wellness. I think that's already, I think we kind of sewed that up. But something we want to revisit that we kind of sidetracked on was the, um...
B twenty, wasn't it?
B twenty, what's the name of it, communication, uh...
Staff board.
Staff communication.
We kind of got sidetracked on that, so that's going to be our focus for the next meeting to see if we can make some progress on that.
Well, it's no secret that, um, policy has been getting pushed aside around communic- around, um, negotiation scheduling. So, in one sense, you know, apologies for that, but...
Oh, no, it's just the nature of...
Capacity.
Yep.
We don't have much to comment, we have much to say that we've done really good.
I think, uh, the discussion around B twenty could use some defining. Now, a lot of times we pick up policy when there's a legislative change or when there's a specific, um, when there's a specific...
Issue or topic.
Issue or topic that a board or something comes up. We kind of have a more, it's like, we should look at that. And I think that's one of the reasons, you know, our, our committee actually spent some time, the educational leadership team spent some time looking at B twenty. We came to a point and then we've been charged to look at it again. Um, and I think we, we need to, to be effective, I think we need to have some help of what we're looking at and what we're trying to find. So, I'm not, not sure if the committee's the best to do that because we've, we've sort of done it once. If there, if there is an interest to continue to look at B twenty, um, perhaps we should find those that are, are most interested and see if, if, if they define the charge.
Um, would it be helpful for board chairs to go back to their boards and have them enumerate exactly the reasons why they would like to see the policy opened again?
Yeah, yeah, because that's, that would be great help.
I think that's something we can deliver to you prior to February nineteenth. And perhaps limit the scope then of the discussions.
So, is that a charge for the minutes? So, is, is that a charge that you want Ben to record the minutes?
Yeah, I feel that that's...
Just, just for verification, I, I want to make sure my memory's correct before the prudential committee meets and talks about it. I thought a part of that process occurred because of the climate study and what went on there. And we heard some feedback from teachers and staff that felt that they weren't able to talk to us. And then I know on the prudential committee, we have a new board member who has been told that they're not able to talk to board members. So, I don't know if it's just revisiting that policy or that we need to understand the meaning of the policy that maybe we're reading too much into it and keeping hands off of the staff. That's, that's just a suggestion. It's been a while since I've read it, but I think the boards need further guidance on, maybe with Paul, maybe with Judy's help. But I'd like to know if we're understanding it correctly.
The interpretation is, is part of the struggle. And I think unfortunately, its reputation is also part of the struggle. I've had many very appropriate conversations with faculty members where they preface the conversation with, "I know I'm not supposed to be talking with you," and then we go forward, right? And i- if it's said in jest, I, I understand. But if that's, if that's the heart of, of where the, the miscommunication around this is, we need to understand it. So, in you saying that, i- it seems to me that maybe we need to be reaching out to other communities in our school for their opinions around this, uh, around why a policy may or may not need to be revisited as well, right? Administrators, we should reach out to them and the, them, their staffs, faculty and staff, to, to really understand if we're capturing this from both perspectives rather than just ours. Is that, is that a reasonable request to make of our principals?
And, and we've, and we did, we've done that.
We, we did do that work.
We, we went out and they've actually gone out to their staff and, and, um, you know, there's, there's, um, there's the ends of the spectrum in which there's abuse. And every party wants to sort of protect themselves from abuse. And, and therefore the policy is really established to sort of protect those places where there's, is that, is that sense where somebody really steps outside the line? Whether it's a, a parent with a teacher, whether it's a board member with a staff, or whether it's a staff with a board member, or vice versa. That, that somewhere in the middle, there's a healthy engagement. And then also somewhere in the middle, there's an understanding that boards fact find as a collective and not as individuals. And that's something that I'm not sure we all kind of get. That there is sometimes a lot of that sort of, "Well, let me see if I understand this issue better. Let me see if I talk a few people together," rather than saying, "Let me see if I can shape the agenda of the next meeting so that the entire board can get a better understanding of this issue." And, and that's something that we, that, you know, honestly, as we, as we do this, it, what we do is we extend personal knowledge sometimes of issues. And sometimes that personal knowledge on an issue is, crosses lines. And, and sometimes there's, there's can be some awkwardness because somebody has had that private conversation and it sort of comes up either in public or in executive session and, um, it really... So, I, I think you're right. We, we should have some board training around it of how do we, how do we collect and assess information as a board member, a publicly elected board member for decision-making purposes? But then also, how do we handle this kind of... Because a number of the teachers sort of said, "Don't make it, I, I need some kind of way where I can say, 'Oh, oh, board policy.'" You know, because some of it also talks in the, in B twenty talks about that, um, you know, that there's also a sense where, um, we can't just kind of stop in into a classroom and say, "Hey, I want to have a conversation." That there's also a quid pro quo on saying, "Uh, I think you, maybe you should talk to the principal or maybe you should talk to the superintendent instead of coming right to me and talking to me, teacher, about the book I chose for this class," you know? And, and we can, I think, sit around and say, "Yeah, that would be, that, that's third rail." But that's part of what the policy wants to try to protect is when someone really steps out and says, "I think that's a bad choice of a knowledge," um, and wants to have that conversation as a board member with the faculty. That's, you know, we're, we're in really bad, we're in a bad point now.
The other nuance to that is, um, for those of us that have children in school, have you approached being perceived as a parent approaching the teacher or is the board member approaching?
Yeah, that, that's a, you know, I, that's a real hard one. Wear that hat, and that's a hard one.
Marla?
I think the, the other thing is too, there are enough staff members from when I got back on the board that do have some legitimate qualms about approaching boards, like even coming to a board meeting and speaking on a subject. It, so I think it's worthwhile revisiting it. And then if we understand it, maybe we need to make sure that all the staff understands it or why it's in place and if it needs some tweaking or changes. But I think that's the hardest thing is we haven't talked, I don't think, as a PC board or, um, even this board. And that, from doing that climate study and going to some of those meetings, I think that's kind of like the center pole of this whole conversation.
Well, I think you're right on to where we, if I could paraphrase, please. But when we got to it, we sort of felt like there was a lot of that. Like we just were gummed up in our communication, but it really wasn't about B twenty.
Right.
It was, we were gummed up about our communication.
That's right.
And maybe it was about the structure of our meeting, maybe it was about the timing of our meeting, maybe it was just about us. And we had to work through something and it wasn't going to be about some letter followed by some number that was going to make it better. You know, it was, it was gonna actually kind of come down to some rolling up the sleeves and kind of creating some relationships.
And the whole communication, I, I think it really does have to go back to the local boards. I agree with you, Mark. I think that's a great idea. Have some great conversations within the boards and then come back here. And we have a carousel meeting, don't we? I saw on my schedule, there's in June, there's a carousel.
It's in June, but probably coming back here in March with the results of the local board information. And then I'd like to invite Paul O'Brien in and he could provide like background, the history, the intent and spirit of the policy. And then you can talk about the points that Brian was talking about, where you find there's still sticking points or, or the added clarity about what constitutes a formal communication. I think that word trips people up, um, and, and it deserves the time, uh, for this board to talk, talk through with Paul here. So, it's a good approach, I think.
Okay. Anything else? All right, negotiations is our last task team update, uh, to offer. The small group meetings have been occurring now with some regularity. And we are set for a, uh, just a brief, uh, meeting of the full negotiations team on Wednesday to cover, uh, progress.
Right.
Do you have anything else to add to that?
I can just add that, um, this Wednesday, um, from four thirty to six, uh, the small group is meeting again. The tenor has been wonderful. There's been a lot of cooperation, um, good clarifying questions. It's been very healthy, um, and I think we're making some, some good progress. It's taking some time, but there is definitely an interest in moving forward with the direction that this board has set. With the language, I think both sides of this, um, work will all appreciate one contract. It's easier for them, it's easier for us, um, to have that, um, unity. Um, so there's, there's good work moving forward and it feels promising.
Good, thank you.
What about the next one, Sarah?
Yeah, it's this Wednesday, small group, next Wednesday's full council.
Sorry, the meetings tend to blend every once in a while, don't they?
They do.
Oh. Yes, we do. All right, um, and, uh, next up on our agenda, number five, I'm sure without any controversy, is our legislative update. So, I've asked Martha if she would be willing to speak to some of the, um, more pressing issues that the legislature is looking at this year. She has agreed. Uh, so Martha, we are all ears.
So, education is a pretty hot topic in my career on a number of fronts. I thought Steve Dale did an excellent job in last week's issue of the state update of characterizing both the symposium at UVM with Tony Wagner present and the things that happened during that day. And then talking about the summit at St. Mike's the next day to talk about the tuition funding. And I did forward Mary Picas's framing paper. And if you haven't taken a look at it, he does a really good job, I think, of describing Vermont's funding system and what various people are asking questions about. So, there's discussions happening in committee around those areas. Let's see, um... So, the state board just reviewed its priorities with the House and Senate Education Committees. And they named six things. And you'll see this in your newsletter from the SBA this week. Focus on the opportunity achievement gap. Adopt a coordinated approach to assessment and accountability. And I actually had the pleasure of meeting with the new commissioner today. And I'm very impressed with how focused she is on how to use data to drive decision-making, good decision-making. Prohibit the privatization of public schools. Examine governance structures. And I do think the governance structure is not going away. Ensure adequate staffing and support for the state board and the agency. The agency is fairly, very thinly staffed. And they're looking at, they want to look at the special education funding system and do a more global approach instead of a kind of per child approach. I don't know what will come of that. I thought this was very interesting. The Department, the agency, has a student to staff ratios report. And it appears that Rebecca is making some very concrete recommendations that, um, for elementary schools with more than fifty students, class sizes have to be ten or more. So, these are minimums that she's looking at. If they're fewer than one fifty, a minimum size is five, um, and so forth, you'll see in the report. For me, they sound like, oh my goodness, five students in a class is okay. But then she'll tell you that there are schools with two or three kids in a class with a teacher. So, um, I, I would suggest that I'm going to, and I would suggest that you look at this staffing report. And I think on their website, you'll find the recommendations as well. So, she seems very interested in providing information to communities that she hopes will help them move in a different direction. So, let's see. Pre-kindergarten, the pre-k bill is on hold in the Senate. I think what's definitely holding it up is the fact that the way it's designed right now, it's going to be paid for with the property tax. And we'll talk about all that in a minute. I don't think that's going to move until, if it moves, much later in the session. Yeah, so, I'd say there's a lot going on. I think the fact that across Chittenden County and, in fact, across the state, you're seeing budgets go up just a little and tax rates go up a lot is, is creating a lot of impetus for conversation. Unfortunately, I find when the topic is education in the legislature, everyone has their very own idea about what should be done. And building consensus around anything is incredibly challenging. So, but I do think the climate is right for change. I think it just remains to be seen what that change will look like. I have asked, and I drew on this work from Farrar Town News... I have asked, and I drew on this work from, for our town newsletter, but your budget's come later. Um, I have been working with Jeff Francis and Steve Dale to put together, and I think Jeff Francis, Jeff shared it with the superintendents, a sheet that explains the phenomena that we're seeing. Budget's going up a little, tax rate's going up a lot. And it's there to get it into a form that they'll share with boards and superintendents. And I'm working to share it with the legislature. If we can have a common understanding of the driving factors, then maybe we can have a better discussion. I don't know. So let me stop there and if people have questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Andre?
Um, you touched upon, um, the prohibition of, um, private, privatizing schools. I, I guess.
This is the State Board of Education is looking at that.
But I guess, um, I know we're facing that question, but I, I think who actually has the authority, the absolute authority to?
When you're saying we're facing that, you mean Westford saving, not we CCSU, I just wanna clarify.
No, 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 excuse me. But I guess the question is, who ultimately will have the authority to close down a school? Will it be the electorate, the school board, the state?
So, right now, the only way a public school can be closed, well, there's probably more than one way. I do believe that the State Board can, could potentially close a school. But really, the only way that a public school has become unapproved independent, and it's happened in only two communities, is with the community voting not off, not to operate a school.
Right.
And then a private entity is formed and comes in and rents the building and operates the school.
Well, I guess I was thinking more in lines of, um, two adjoining communities, Bob Deer and Waterville. One actually shut their school down and they're no longer a school. And they're like, so.
You can do that. A community can do that at any time. And tuition its students to another public school.
So the actual school can be closed by the community, but the continuance of a school as a private entity has to, um.
That's a separate question.
But that's a separate, those are two distinct issues. So the authority to actually close the school down lies within the community. But not to have any school at all. I mean, yeah.
Yeah, I think the difficulty here is, is where the lines are drawn.
And what will be the lines.
Yeah, and, and the, the phrase, um, serving largely the same students is rather important because this isn't a blanket statement around independence. It's more of a, um, transitioning one type of entity to another and the interplay that occurs.
And it's more a Westford issue, but I did find the paper that Martha was talking about that Jeff disseminated as far as the factors contribu- contributing to the increase in the FY 2015 education tax rates. It is a really helpful piece. I'm gonna ask Ben to put it on the web, on the board's site, um, so he can visit that tomorrow.
Um, Martha, you had mentioned, um, consensus is difficult to, to achieve. Um, in the last legislative report, I believe I saw some, um, proposed bill around the consolidation of SUs into thirty, I think was the number.
Get rid of SUs altogether and form, have thirty superintendencies around the state.
I see. So do, do, have any of the, of those approaches met any type of, um, acceptance? Or, you know, it seems like we, we hear a new one every year.
So, I do think that the Education Committee in the House is looking at it very seriously. They had Dick Kay come back in, who was a commissioner at one time, who had a white paper on consolidation. They had him come back in and talk. They've had other people come and talk. You know, for people who represent large districts with multiple schools, like Burlington, you know, they think this makes perfect sense. For people who represent smaller districts, where, you know, they have schools that are the hearts of communities, it's a much harder sell. You know, you're gonna have to, and I think it's only gonna sell if you can somehow convince people that children are gonna be better off. And it's not easy. But Rebecca, I think, will.
Facilitate that conversation.
I think she'll facilitate. That's a good way to say it. She was a principal during the formation of Rivendell, which is a New Hampshire, Vermont school district between a town on one side of the river and a town on the other. And really knew how to bring people together to make a good decision. So it will be, on an intellectual level, it will be interesting to watch how she moves that conversation forward.
Andre, when you're referring to, um, the two, um, SU, and that seems to be two per county, seems to be the, what they're looking at? But this is not, this is merged districts under one umbrella, but it's not consolidations. It's not consolidating districts, so it's like a K through twelve consortium, but rather pull the, the districts underneath.
No, I think it is a K through twelve.
Oh.
I think, I think it is, um, I think that's exactly what it is. Some people, people have suggested various ways of dipping it up. Um, I don't think there's any consensus.
But have they, have they brought forward any different method of how this will be paid for other than, because that's like I've always voiced that to continue to have these ideas, but they have not changed the funding, how the funding is occurring.
I think that may be why there's little traction for some of the COGS.
I mean, they've changed, they've suggested changing everything else, but how the funding is gonna occur.
Well, I don't think this is about making the funding better. This, in their minds, this is about providing better education for kids. And, you know, we could talk all night about it. But I think the feeling is that superintendents cannot focus well on moving change forward, creating an education system for the twenty-first century when they have to serve many, many, many boards. Is that a fair way to say it, Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, that's valid, very valid.
There's some superintendents who have fifty-six board members. Um, geographically located in quite a spectrum of territory. And, and, um, I think the thing about this proposal with the thirty districts is there would be one board and one superintendent. So that, that's where the, uh, big change was.
It's a big change, be a hard sell. But it was a huge change in the sixties when union high schools were formed and tons of little high schools were closed to create those unions. And it might be instructive to, I mean, I think that was about opportunity for kids because those little high schools couldn't provide the offerings that a bigger entity could provide. Of course, we still have some really small high schools in Vermont. But I think we have to ask questions about whether they're meeting student need.
Any more questions from Martha?
Um, one final one, and this may be off base, but with this direction is also, I would dare say that a lot of private entities have also come into existence. And they also look in success stories and why the creation of that has occurred.
There are only two that have taken a public school and basically turned it into a private school.
I'm not referring to that. No, I'm referring to, uh, other schools.
Independent schools.
Independent, actual real, you know, private schools, non-public, but they're private schools that have come into existence. And I, I think it's a fair statement to say that those have increased over time.
Maybe, I think.
Obviously an attraction.
I know. I, I'd have to look at the numbers. I don't think that's true.
I was looking at the list the other day and, um, it seems pretty similar to what it's been. I didn't see an increase in the last three.
I think North Bennington is the only new one.
Right. There's not really, there's always been quite a few.
Right.
Um, so I don't think it's been growing actively.
Okay. Thank you very much, Martha. I, I believe the VSBA legislative update number three came out right before this meeting, by the way.
Right.
Good reading. All right, our next agenda item number six, the annual work plan. So included in your packet is the existing, um, annual work plan that Judy had provided us um, after the admin, um, materials. But what we're hoping to do at this meeting was to bring forward the feedback from each of the member boards around what the priorities were at those board levels and try to understand what CCSU's priorities would be in an annual work plan for a superintendent. Um, specifically about them and then the work product of our committees. So, um, I'm very, I'm very interested to understand, first of all, from the board chairs, what feedback was from, um, each of your boards. And if you could summarize, um, you know, the top three or four items that you saw. And I, I, I'm curious if there's similarities between, between us. And then we'll work on, on trying to identify which ones actually apply to CCSU as a whole. So Michael, are you, uh, are you, uh, prepared to discuss some of the feedback you had gotten?
I didn't really have things broken out into so much as a, as a top three. Well, however you want to. Just, so, you know, in our last, in our last, uh, in our last budget session, we, we brought up some of the, you know, what, uh, what some of the goals around the PC, uh, would it be? And Marla did a, did a good job of putting them down on paper for us. Um, you know, and so one of the goals, um, I was looking at, uh, you know, Act one fifty-three and, um, you know, and how waiver of acceptance changes our approach. So that was, that was one of the, one of the items to look at. Um, you know, uh, looking at a new superintendent, introducing him or her to the, to the community, what changes need to occur within the CCSU model? You know, with hiring a new assistant superintendent? Continuing to look at the, uh, focus of the climate study. Um, how curriculum changes and, and how the, the change in assessing children needs to drive the changes. Um, another thing that I guess comes out of PC, but, and how it affects the, uh, the CCSU in terms of, um, you know, looking at using Park Street as, as a preschool and how does that affect space available for CCSU meetings and, and, and such?
Okay.
Just be on beanbags.
That's.
It's gonna surprise. I, I haven't heard this one yet.
No, we're, we're discussing in our budget right now and we have two K, um, red department programs and one of the preschools is gonna move into this building. They have another one. It makes sense to bring both here. Um, then the topic branched out into, we have two other preschool problems, programs in the schools. Doesn't it make sense to make Park Street a preschool? Cause PC will be facing, uh, space issues. So I think we need to discuss, I mean, it's a topic that came up. And I think the CCSU board needs to address where we're going to find space for meetings and possibly the ACE program. It's future possibility.
Right.
No, I appreciate the connection to CCSU over around, around space.
Um, and then, um, you know, continuing with, uh, new board member training, new chair training in the, in the manuals like, uh, Marla had brought up earlier. Negotiations, the superintendent evaluation timeline. How's that for a list?
That's quite a list.
All right.
But I, I, I got them down. Who can, who will, please forward me, um, the original document as well.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Jack?
Just, there's, there's two that I just wanna add to the list. One is our continuing support on the forty-six appreciative inquiry visioning process and how we're going to use the Essex Educational Center into the, now and into the future. What's, what's that going to look like in the year two thousand twenty? Uh, the second, the second one is the impacts on negotiations in terms of, uh, uh, curriculum, uh, flexibility. If there are issue, particularly in our non-traditional, uh, programs that are after hours and, uh, adult programs and how do we, and, and unique opportunities at the high school that may be outside of standard. Uh, how do, how do we work, how do we work those, those needs of our students with, which up until recently have been defined schoolwork days?
Okay. That's kind of a, that's kind of a good one to work with. It's, it's, it's encouraging to think that education is changing in that way. Um, I just summarized, um, there's not enough for everybody, but, um, summarized the opinions of the Westford Board. And you'll see, um, some repetition here, and that's just the opinions of five board members. But, um, the successful completion or continuation of our visioning process, I think very similar to yours. Um, successful convert, implementation of common core and, and all of the pieces that are necessary to get that moving. Uh, it's a great deal of interest in, um, the way we do assessments, how we can extend, uh, that style of thinking to become a, a more data-driven board, but also to provide better tools for teachers to be able to, uh, react to, to student need in a, in a quick fashion. Um, this came up at one of our budget work sessions, but our method of budgeting for one year is fraught with lots of variables already. But the community showed some interest in the concept of long-term financial, um, projections and, and obviously the tax implications of that. But, um, you know, we, we. But we, we capital plan around systems. You know, how can we do a similar function around other financial impacts in our school to perhaps identify peaks or valleys that we need to be reacting more than one year in advance to? The successful completion of the teacher evaluation model change. And maybe even considering some parent input, parent or student input opportunities into that process. There was concern around transparency and communication, specifically how can we do more, how can we do a better job? We've seen a great deal of change in this respect in that we try to provide almost all of our materials to our community in an accessible way. But we could do better, especially when we talk about the delivery and the timing of messages and opportunities for input. Transparency around negotiations was, was a priority, you know. And also perhaps around the reporting on how we do bid contracts, purchase services, reporting out on things such as our school lunch program. How much understanding is there in the community around some of the things that happen a little under the covers and not necessarily headlines? The last section here, I think ties into what we saw earlier today, but really embracing the concept of data management. And thinking of it in a long-term sense, you know, the, the fact that we can put data in a database and query it is great. But what is that going to enable us to do if we approach it in a blue-sky thinking sort of way? You know, how can we fundamentally change the, the services we offer to be more responsive because of that capability? The implementation of it is, is, you know, a coming priority, but even putting the planning in place to think of future might be a, might be the better way of discussing that. Tying assessments to reporting on child progress. If we have the opportunity, how do we build this into something that parents can, parents can understand more of? And, you know, the birth pre-K outreach as a means for prepping our future students. You've seen a little bit of this push from the, from the state side. But we've also had, at least in our numbers around planning room visits and all that, the shift. The number and types of visits are starting to show up sooner than expected. And by, at least in small communities, by reaching out, how can we prep students to come in ready to learn, be respectful, and understand how a school can function to their benefit? I have, I have everybody's input from what they spoke of today. But my goal is to meet as an executive committee, so the three board chairs, to go through these. And I'll, what I'll try to do is tie, tie up the themes based on what we've seen here. And, and narrow it down to, to goals that are CCSU-wide. Brian?
I was just wondering, going back to the timeline, these goals, we'd be looking for these goals to be having an outcome by when?
This would be for next year's AYP. So the Ju-, July 1 through June, July 1, 2014 to.
Thirty, June 2015.
Yeah, June thirty, fifteen.
The timeline though, on the superintendent timeline, March 24th, we've got to decide on these goals. So that agenda, March 24th, you have to have that work done and brought to us because we as a board, CCSU Board, have to vote on them so that the annual work plan, the needs assessment can happen. So just a heads up, it isn't, it's now, but the work would be looking at July, but we have to decide that in March. And Leaders at Work, last year, we decided on that timeline because all current board members are here right now. You wait till April and boards change, and then you're having to retrain everybody. So when we talked last year at Leaders at Work, we felt it very important to get the goals and the annual work plan in place before our new members, not to leave them out of the loop, but allow them time for training.
So it, it's also important to, to separate what the CCSU goals and the individual board goals for a superintendent are. Right? What, what we would like to do is, is kind of incorporate a little bit of both in the annual work plan, right? The, the concept being that, that something, let's say, visioning that is very much ongoing and potentially two boards next year, how does that relate to a third board? Well, perhaps visioning isn't, isn't the right way to categorize it in the annual work plan. But maybe that does move more towards communications and community engagement, which would capture the interests of, of the third board. So we'll, we'll define it so that it has, it does encompass the individual goals, but also a, a definable and measurable CCSU goal as well. So the second part of this conversation is around task team, task team output. And I don't think, I, I don't expect that, that there was a great deal of, of thinking about this from individual board members. But it's, it's definitely a concern I have that we stay focused in our task teams. You know, the, the fact that Leaders at Work has brought back the evaluation model to, to be back on schedule, I think is great. In the future for next year, I think we would be well-served to look at what the full implementation has looked like in a year and iterate where needed, with a bit of focus on the evidentiary portion of it. So not only undersi-, understanding what evidence can look like, but how can we gather it from primary sources? And a board member is one primary source, but it's going to have to be at some point reaching into the schoolhouses. And to understand the right model to do that in a way that works at all levels is a bit of a challenge.
You're saying this in light of our conversation of Policy B20?
I'd say a bit, especially, especially there. So I would, you know, this is just throwing out ideas, but I think that might be a focused approach at what Leaders at Work may be interested in. From negotiations, I, I definitely think we're going to need to build on whatever comes out of this year. But I, to that, I would like to add, you know, what I've, what I've essentially called a big idea workshop that we should do after negotiations conclude to plan what we may want to introduce in the next year or two or three. We find ourselves constantly in a reactionary mode with a lot of our, our obligations. And I feel like we're very responsible in that, but it does leave very precious little time for long-term research. And if it's just the question of setting aside some calendar time and getting together and try to understand what larger-scale concepts we can explore in the interim, that may be a very noble goal. The communications team, I think, should really stick with the training and information sharing aspect that they're on this year. And maybe extend it a bit towards professional development around transparency and effective leadership. A statement you made earlier, Martha, or Martha, Marla, around what our level of understanding really is on B20? I mean, that's a perfect example of something that is achievable and, and may not seem very, very difficult, but we haven't tackled it. And I, I think with a little bit of, with a little bit of identification of some of those items, we can really bring all of our collective knowledge up enough to have our, our board members be able to, to speak decisively on some of these topics.
One, one thing with coming back onto the board is from being kind of on the outside and coming back is I was on the policy committee for a while before Charlie moved me to Leaders at Work. And what I noticed is when policy works well, when you've got a state mandate, a, a change in law, and you've got a policy and you know where you're going with it, but like B20, some of the policies that I think get bogged down have to, like I said earlier, be talked about at CCSU level or at board levels first. I, I think it would make the process smoother and faster because if we as a CCSU Board do not see a problem with it, then why bog down one of the task teams? You know, that's.
I think if the policies are not driven so much by legislature or whatnot, it might be good to try to understand the intent behind the policy. And attending that may be part of the example of B20, what, what is it striving to do?
Well, you also have the inevitable, you know, interpretation and enforcement angle, right? How, how a previous superintendent interpreted it versus a future one may be drastically different. So that angle has to be, I think, carefully considered. I mean, we don't sit around here creating our own interpretations individually. We, we look to somebody who tends to do so for the, for the system so that we're all on the same page. So reactions on, on task team priorities. Have, have you or any board members that you represent seen urgent needs that you feel we need to address in the coming year? And an urgent need may be too many meetings. We can't concentrate, right? So focus might, you know, focus to me is one of the priorities. Perhaps a smaller number of focused meetings with a reasonable work product is the better way to manage the time of board members.
Mark?
Yes.
I honestly think that if you go into the committee meetings knowing that you're meeting on a certain night of each month, whether you pick the Tuesday night or Wednesday night, I find that easier than meeting at a meeting and trying to decide when everybody's got the next time free. Like if I commit to a committee, I know I can commit to those nights. So that's just a suggestion there. And I, I think it's time for us to look at the time of year when we know that those committees cannot meet. We know in December, Prudential Committee doesn't meet the month of Chris. I mean, there's just some times that we, I think we think we're going to get work done. And the reality is we have to have it done by that March 24th meeting because then we're going into the April. Westford changes board members around the first of March, right? And I, and I, I feel bad because with Charlie resigning, we had to look at the PC the other night at who's on what committees, and we're down one person. And Mike is Chair. He's on Communications. It's at a crucial point where he can't leave it. We need him on at Leaders at Work because of the superintendent evaluation. It makes sense that the chairs are on the Leaders at Work Committee. You know, there's a possibility that if all the chairs are on Leaders at Work, the three chairs could go off and we could separate the meeting and the chairs could go off and do some of their executive committee work. And other board members are working the daily work of Leaders at Work. There's some possibilities there. And what other committee? You're on CCSU.
CCSU.
And so it's like all of a sudden, you see someone becoming Chair and you and Mark are in the same position. But it, it looks like there's a.
And negotiations. And negotiations.
And negotiations and.
Plus PC Board Chair becomes CSU Board Chair this year.
So if I, I, I'm, I'm seeing capacity.
It's a capacity issue, and I, the other capacity, capacity issue I see is, I know why you're doing negotiations yearly. But whenever we get a chance to talk about that, there's got to be some heart-to-hearts about that. We're taking two members from every board and working what time period, and that's stretching it right there. I don't know. I don't know how to solve it. I don't know how everybody would resolve it. But it's, I think it's daunting and to try to go out, like now, we've got to find somebody to take Charlie's place. And I don't know if there's going to be anybody that's going to run for the Board right now. You know what I mean?
So we need to, we need to do a better job of determining the proper scope and goals for what we're doing year to year and.
Realistic.
Right, right. Yeah, I, I, I feel that that's one of the, that's one of the small changes we can do that would increase our effectiveness. Because truthfully, you know, we, we tend to lose focus with too much, and that, that's not helpful. Okay, so without belaboring this, I'll take this back to the Executive Committee, so we'll have another meeting, to identify our recommendations for Leaders at Work's AYP needs. Yes, Brian?
Can I just advise on the, in looking at that, that body of work and the goals and the work plan, I'd suggest that you look at some kind of capacity of eighty or seventy-five or sixty-five percent. Because there's the reasonable assumption that something's going to happen, some act, some legislative requirement, some sweeping change of educational need that we have to respond to. So when we look at sort of the work plan, there's the end other things as assigned. Because, I mean, just look at the last sort of couple of years as we've seen things come down, 153 and other things. I mean, you know, we just can't, you can't foresee some of this stuff, and, and they have major, major consequences. The other thing that we benefit from is that our district has experienced crisis. And many, many, many districts experience crisis in a multitude of different ways. And we've been fortunate in that way, and that can take enormous time away. We're also very, we have huge, wonderful, competent staff that can take things in which we have legal counsel on staff and other things that we benefit so much from. But you know, you can get a, a major lawsuit, a major this or that. So I just really urge the Executive Committee, don't, don't look at trying to really feel like, you know, have we, have we really put the full value in what we expect? Because there's so much outside the annual work plan that is also a response.
I, I appreciate that. And in, in trying to keep it measurable, right, with, with evidence that we can identify ahead of time, I, I, it brings us a step closer to realizing that, you know, you, our expectation really is this. And we can contain, I think, the time constraints that inevitably come with vague descriptions of what our expectations are. Okay, thank you.
Did the high school have goals that?
Yeah, Jack added two to Michael's list.
Oh, okay.
But, you know, I, I, I don't plan on us doing that work here, so we can, we can move on. A quick update on the superintendent search process. I have a statement for everyone here. One, two, three, Jack. So this comes from our, our facilitator, Brian O'Regan. I spoke with him today, and he prepared a statement for us last week. The place that, so this statement will be disseminated to. The place that, so this statement will be disseminated to the CCSU educational community tomorrow. Uh, this is, uh, your first look at it. This is a statement from Brian. Uh, thus far, the executive committee or the CCSU board, um, has not been involved in screening candidates or first-round interviews and that's by design in the process that we agreed to. So, these are his words. Um, what he has been able to share with me outside of what you see here is that, um, this week interviews have been going on. Uh, there were four today. There will be, uh, several more coming up, uh, I believe next week. He's been very pleased with the way that the, um, SAC has come together. They've taken their work very seriously. And he's seen that as a net positive, although one that's not surprising. Um, and if things move forward, um, as he predicts, we will most likely start to see our interaction with the process begin, um, with second-round interviews and the recommendation of candidates to participate in those interviews. So, I think largely because of the other issues that have been happening around, um, educational finance, uh, I have received zero interest or questions from the community around this since our last communication. Um, our email account that was set up for this has gotten an offer for a very low-priced mortgage, uh, but nothing else. So, I suspect this is going to stir up, um, the interest that has been missing thus far. And with that, I'll try to include the timeline again for, um, what next steps look like. Questions? Um, all right, so just one last statement here. Uh, you'll see that Brian has, uh, identified the, the total number of candidates. He said that that was, uh, slightly smaller than he may have imagined. However, the caliber of the candidates was all, was uniformly high. So, um, um,
Excuse me, Michael?
That's encouraging.
It is, it is. And he's been doing this for quite some time, so I, I believe his opinion is fairly well-informed on that. But otherwise, um, I have no further comment to share from Brian. Questions? Okay, our next agenda item number eight, uh, the consent agenda, including approved warrants and approved meeting minutes from November eighteenth, twenty thirteen. Do I have a motion? Moved by Martha, seconded by Ryan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Will we do?
Obsteem? Nine, zero. Uh, we move to future agenda items, two of which, uh, you have, if you've been paying attention, should already be on your scorecard. Um, the priorities for the annual work plan and, uh, we will be, we will be signing or, or, sorry, accepting the, the recommendation for a superintendent at our next meeting. I know, I know. So, uh, what, the appointment of a superintendent, I guess is the right way of putting it. So, what other next, uh, what other, if we needed, if we didn't need more, what other topics would people like to, uh, cover at our next CCSU meeting?
Um, any recording of the waiver request for the one fifty-three?
Okay, waiver. Uh, that's a good time, yeah. We'll, I think we'll have a little bit more to share. Uh, things have been kind of quiet with the changing of the guard, um, in Montpelier.
B twenty, um, whatever the, whatever the
B twenty feedback?
And any other policies the policy committee brings to us, huh?
Okay.
Will you have any results on negotiations by then?
Um, I think that, yes, will be an update that would occur probably in, uh, in executive session.
Okay, um, and
Will we be just opening up the client service at that time?
Yes.
Uh, that opens up three seventeen and runs, uh, for that period of time, so it'll be administered. And it will be just closing by this meeting. So, yeah, there won't be anything to report out on that.
Other than the fact that it occurred.
And that's really using the March, uh, As the CCSU board, are we need providing information regarding this to, um, the tax base or is that just back to the local board to me?
I think so.
No.
But I mean, is it something to be discussed for future at some point for fostering somebody message? I don't know. I, should there be any response from this board?
Okay, um, we'll think about that one. I'm not, I'm not sure where it lands. Um, we won't, we won't be ready to accept our budget at that point, but we will have results from Westford's budget vote. So, if there is some repercussions that ripple back to CCSU, that one might be one.
Probably there'll be more opportunities for additional legislative updates.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, uh, that concludes, uh, agenda item number nine. Agenda item number ten, uh, is executive session around the superintendent evaluation process. This is the formative assessment. So, um, do I have a motion to take us into executive session?
Send motion.
To discuss.
To discuss personnel superintendent evaluation.
Second.
Second, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, executive session at eight-thirty.